And then it's a lot of its butt.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. This is the first of several fire assessment fee discussions we will have. Basically, you can expect to see it every month. You'll see it obviously tonight, you'll see it in December on the 14th. Again, you'll see it in January and February. There are some statutory requirements in which we must do some advertising as well as required meetings with USA Council as well as possibly with the public. We have begun the advertising as required. We began that last week, and that's a requirement. In case you do pass this, if you do not, all we have lost is $400 in advertising and the amount of time to present you this information. So we feel it's imperative that we go through the process and that you have an opportunity each month to ask questions, to think about what has been presented, the information that's been presented, and so forth, and to be able to ask all your questions. Earlier today, a lot of you had the opportunity to tour the fire station 35. Again, thank you, Tim Greiner, our Fire Chief and Public Safety Director, there he is, Chief O'Grady, for opening the doors, taking you out there on the fire engine. I think it was exciting whether you were on the newer one or the older one, and whoever rode over one way and came back another way. But also to see what our firefighters, where they live. And I say that because they're there 12 hours, you know, and they're living. And several members, as we were speaking today, the crew, their quarters, they need some work.
That was nice.
So it would be, we need to be able to get these guys and ladies some different quarters at some point in the future.
There's the understatement of the year.
Yes, yes. They take wonderful care of what they have, and we appreciate that as citizens and city. But they still need some assistance there. I think tonight what we're going to do is open the door to Tim, let him present the fire assessment fee from the chief's perspective. Mr. McKenney will come up on the finance side and give you just a brief summary of his perspective. The December meeting, I will tell you, will have, the FA will be here, so our financial advisor, so that's really the meat and potatoes of the finance piece. So we'll cover most of the finances at that meeting, as well as we anticipate the Fitch report being available to you by that point in time, so that you can see the outcome of that report, so that we can see how that fits into the plan, and then we can discuss that. So really, those two meetings are already predefined, and then the January one will be based on what we need to answer as far as questions in response to those two meetings or what else comes up in the meantime. So, Chief?
Thank you very much. Mayor, Council, Miss Davis, thanks for the chance to talk with you. Actually, the crew that was here, or the crews here tonight, they gave you the tour this afternoon, so thank you guys very much. Great job. So, fire assessment fee, we've had one here in Mount Dora for about three years. I just thought I would start with an overview. It's allowed by the state legislature to give assessments to properties to provide for their fire protection. Here in Mount Dora, we've had one for three years. We're in our last year of it, and the tangible result of that are the two fire engines that we have today. So much more reliable, better setup than we had before. So what I'd like to talk to you about tonight is kind of our current level of service, what the impacts of that are, and then give you a few recommendations as well. So who determines our fire department's level of service, and that's you guys. And it's a good analogy, it's kind of like your homeowner's insurance. You can have a good homeowner's insurance and assume a little bit of risk, or you can have really lousy homeowner's insurance and you have a lot of risk. So it's kind of the same analogy for fire service. One thing that's not on this slide is the status quo. That's almost an impossible thing. If we kept the exact same fire department and fire protection that we have today, our town's going to grow, we're going to have more congested streets, and our travel time's just going to get longer and longer because of that. So our current level of service. Nationally, the standard that's recommended by the National Fire Protection Association, also our accrediting agencies, is to have a four-minute travel time to 90% of your calls. So there's always going to be outliers, but 90% of your calls, you should be able to get to within four minutes. In Mount Dora, we get to 90% of our calls in twice that time, eight minutes. We only get to 63% of our calls within four minutes. So clearly, there's some room for improvement for us. So some reasons for wanting a four-minute response. There are some health reasons. If you are not breathing for four minutes, there's really not a lot that somebody can do for you. A stroke victim and a trauma victim also have a window of opportunity to get to surgery. So there's clearly some health reasons for wanting a short travel time for your fire department. There are some safety reasons. This is an incredibly busy graph. There's one thing that I'd like you to take away from it. That curve represents the rate at which a fire grows, and it is on an exponential curve. It's not a straight line growth. So the further to the left that you get an opportunity to put a fire out, the easier it is. The further to the right you go, obviously, the harder and harder it gets. So there's a short two-minute video here that I'll narrate for us while it goes. The room on the left, what is labeled there as legacy furniture, first of all, these two rooms are kind of furnished the same. So a couch in each, a chair in each, curtains in both, carpet in both, end table in both. You can run this. Yeah. So the room on the left that's labeled legacy furniture is furniture like you'd see maybe in your grandmother's house, made with all natural materials, wood, cotton, leather, wool, that kind of thing. The room on the right is modern furniture that we buy today. So the experiment started two minutes ago. They lit a candle, put it too close to the curtains, it started on fire, and the clocks just kept ticking. So I'll give you a quick metaphor to keep in mind while you're watching this video. If you lit a one-pound block of wood on fire and compare that to one pound of wood shavings, the wood shavings are going to burn a lot faster. So when we look at the furniture in these two rooms, the furniture in the legacy room, so the furniture that would have been in our grandparents' home, has about 8,000 BTUs per pound. The furniture that you would buy today contains about 16,000 BTU per pound. So now you're comparing what would have been one-pound block of wood to two pounds of wood shavings. So not only is the heat release rate that much higher, that much faster, but it's twice as much energy stored in that. So on the left, the legacy room with the old-style furniture, if we were to let this video just continue to run, it would eventually flash over, or the whole room's burning, in about 15 to 18 minutes. You'll notice that the room on the right is pretty close to that already, and it will reach full flashover at 3 minutes and 40 seconds. So that's what that very busy graph on the preceding slide was showing here. You can clearly see there's nothing too safe in that room on the right. So it stops here just a second. I think we're good to move back to the slide. Yeah. 3 minutes and 40 seconds to flashover. So there's health reasons, there's safety reasons for wanting a short travel time, and there are also economic impacts. Much like we have our power grid at Innovation District certified by Duke Energy to say, hey, this is a safe place for a business to come invest. Having a good ISO rating, which is the insurance service organization that reads every fire department in the country, having a good ISO rating is a way to say to businesses, hey, this is a good, safe place to come invest your money and do business in Mount Dora. The ISO ratings are what's calculated by insurance companies on a portion of your commercial property insurance, so there's a chance of having lower commercial property insurance. And just having a more attractive place for businesses to come helps broaden our tax base so that not all of the taxes are borne by, but shared by businesses also. So how would we get from where we are now with that eight-minute response time to 90% of our calls to a four-minute response time? Well, a third fire station would get us, if they're strategically located, to get 85% of our calls in four minutes. And that's not all the way there, but that's a lot closer than where we are now. So where would those be? So you all toured our west-side fire station today.
Cute.
You saw that for yourselves. That station is a modular building. It was built in 2005. Modular buildings by design are temporary in nature. This one's already 12 years old. Two years ago, we spent over $100,000 doing mold remediation in that building. We still struggle with this air-conditioning system. In addition to that, it's on a quarter-mile dead-end road with 290 degree turns, which is not where you want your fire truck to start. And when they reach the end of their driveway, they are literally looking across the street at unincorporated Lake County. It's on the very, very, very edge of our jurisdiction. So not only is it a facility that needs to be replaced, but needs to be done at a different location. That's part of that strategically locating them. Our east side of town, we all know the Woodtown Parkway's coming, and we're going to need coverage that will be able to help us respond out that way. While our town has grown and our fire department's grown, our police department has grown as well, and they are busting at the seams out of space. Police departments typically work out of one big building, so if you look at Lake County Sheriff, they operate out of one big building. Orlando Police Department, they operate out of one big building. Mount Dora Police Department would work better out of one big building instead of trying to give them more space in a second building. So I feel like it would be advantageous to move the fire department out of that building. We've cohabitated there since 1993, but this may be an opportunity to give the police department the rest of the building and allow us to strategically locate where we could put three fire stations in Mount Dora. So some of the advantages, one of the things that I would like to recommend is that we bond out the money to build three fire stations. It would allow us to place them in strategic locations. Fitch and Associates have helped us kind of determine where that would be. It would give us an economy of scale where we can use one architect, one contractor, one set of subs, one schedule. And if we bond out the financing, we could continue our fire assessment fee as a dedicated revenue stream to pay back that bond. We would be paying back the bond during the same years that we're living in and operating out of those fire stations. So we're not kicking the can down the road to our grandkids. We're actually sort of paying as you go. One of the conversations that I've heard among you here in this council is, with interest rates low and expected to rise, it would be less expensive to borrow the money now and pay it back as we go than it would be to save our money as we go and pay cash later. This would be an opportunity to do that, too. So that's kind of my conclusion of my part. John McKenney, I think, would like to speak to you a little bit on the mechanics of the bond and fire assessment fee. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor, Council, where I come into this is I make sure that we have made the appropriate notifications. Last Thursday, we started the first of four advertisements within the daily commercial. That's required by state statute. We're working with Miss Amy Walker, with Government Services Group, who we worked with previously when we originally issued this, to make sure we're in compliance. So that on December 14th, not only will we bring the resolution for the Notice of Intent to you for approval, which you all approving that under the assumption, what then would occur is that by approving the resolution for the Notice of Intent to use the uniform method of collecting non-avalorum assessments, we would then resubmit to the property appraiser, the tax collector, and the Department of Revenue all the required notice that this might be forthcoming in a future date on the fiscal year 18, 19 tax bill. So that's where we are on that, to make sure we're in compliance with state statute. The next portion that I'm responsible for, as Chief Greiner told you, is I'm looking at the portion of funding. So I will be, I will be working with the planning department to look not only at the number of residential and non-residential rooftops we have today, but over the next 10 to 20 years, how many rooftops we plan to have within Mount Dora. So that when we, when GSG and staff comes back up to you early next year, and then we know based on what we're charging today, how much money we will be collecting over this, you know, staff-recommended 25-year assessment. Okay? So that as we go to issue debt for three new fire stations, replacement fire engines, replacement ladder trucks, that we want to make sure that for the life of any bonded debt, that we're covering that annual debt service, principal and interest. So we said where staff might, recommendation might be for the length of the assessment, because you don't want to keep coming back every couple of years to make a long-term plan. We would then look if this was passed, and this is what Jeff Larson's going to come back to you on December 14th, is if we plan to issue debt in the next 12 months for three fire stations, and we are planning within the next three to four years to purchase some replacement fire engines, replacement tower trucks, over the next 20 years, what will be that debt service? So we want to plan to retire all debt within 20 years. So what's going to happen then next is those fire stations are going to be 20 years old in 20 years. There's going to be some, some up, major capital upkeep that needs to be done on those stations. So that's where the potential next five years will come, and we would be able to utilize those remaining five years of the assessment to do those major capital outlays and any final on the fire stations plus any final engines. So the fire chief has done a really good job providing to me what the break-down by year would be over the next 25 years. So we're going to take this, provide it to Mr. Larson. As you all saw this evening, this afternoon, a fire engine today is $465,000. To outfit that engine's another $180,000. A new tower truck is probably going to be another $900,000 to $1 million. We're looking at fire stations that could cost anywhere between $3 to $5 million. So these are all, this is all information that the chief and I are providing to our consultants so that they can provide to you the best information from a, how much we have to charge per rooftop, whether residential or non-residential, so that you all are able to make the right decision when the final resolution comes to you, Mayor and Council, in February. Okay?
Tim, will you come up and answer any questions? I know Councilmember Tillot had a couple. John, can you stay there in case you're needed also?
I'll start. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Chief, you may, you were here, and you may recall about three years ago, and you mentioned it peripherally in your comments, I never again want to have to vote for $100, I thought it was $150,000 in mitigation of mold in a Mount Dora facility. And it was, it was necessary because the health of your staff, your firefighters, were at risk. And that's how lethargic in the past, that's not criticism of anybody, but how in the past we have not paid enough attention to the fire service in this city. And so I never again want to have to do that. I really appreciate your comments. It makes all sense to me in terms of money, the financial end, putting it, sending it out through a bond issue. We love to go to the region, grading agencies, and that's fine, because we haven't been there for a while, as I understand it. And getting the best money and the cheapest money we can to fund it, pay as you go, as you said, it makes good sense to me. The worst thing we can do is keep that station 35. I mean, that was, I want to say pimped, but that's not the right way to do it, because that's, you do live in quarters that are appropriate. But it needs, it needs to be either bulldozed down or something needs to be done to, to make sure that you don't have to live in that facility as long as you have or as much in the future as you, as you need to. So it all makes sense to me. It's the wisest use of dollars. It gives protection to the city and gives protection to the residents, gives them the fire services that they need and the time that they, to try to get this eight minutes down to four minutes. And of course, those of us who don't need a fire, an emergency service from the fire department or any of your life-saving skill personnel to serve us, it probably doesn't make any difference. But when you dial that number, you want the four minutes. So I really support what, what you're doing. I'm looking forward to Fitch and Associates study. I haven't made up my mind. It sounds like I have, but I have not, I assure you. But the point is, it is long overdue. So appreciate the information. Thank you.
I have a couple of, I think these are mostly finance questions. You guys can play tag team. Does it cost us to continue the preparation, the filing of documents, et cetera, et cetera? Does that cost us to do that? Does it cost the city?
Yes, ma'am. Well, the legal, the advertisement on date for four weeks is $326.26.
Okay. But we're not talking anything, we're not, but I mean, with filing with the county, with the Lake County and all of that?
Everything I gave you is all that we have to pay.
All right. My next question is, is it either federally or state mandated that schools and churches don't pay a fire assessment fee, like they don't pay property tax?
I would like to defer that to GSG, because that can go either way. But government services group, there, you have the choice as council to exempt or not exempt those organizations. And I believe the fair thing to do is to go with the method that we've done so far, and when Mr. Larson comes here on December 14th, let him present it as is.
I think it's exempted.
They are. But that's what you all chose to do, but not necessarily what's required.
Okay. That was my question. Is it required? I did not know if it was required or not. Okay. So basically, I'm not particularly in favor of an additional fee on people. So I'm not in favor of a, whatever you want to call it, pseudo-tax or anything. I personally think that we should budget this money into our regular budget. And you seem to be doing a fine job at, you know, pulling things out, fencing them off as you were type of thing. I have no problem with bonding out the money, you know, that we need and having a long payback period, because I feel that those users who come into the city during the 20 to 25 to 30-year time period then end up, you know, paying part of it. So like Mr. Wolfson, I haven't made up my mind on the, nor do I think I have to make up my mind tonight on the, you know, fire assessment fee versus avalorum issue. And also, I would like to really see the results of the Fitch study to see if there is a way that we can maximize or, you know, delivery services with possibly even less than three stations. You know, we kind of assume that we need three, but maybe not. And finally, I guess my last comment is, I know we're, we're waiting for the big growth to occur with the completion of the 429, and I would think that having one, one company, one architect, build one at a time type of thing would, would help get me through the "build it and they will come" angst that I have at times with the, with the Innovation District. So I'd like to see some, you know, some shovel, some dirt getting shoveled there soon. So those are my comments.
Can I make one comment to that real quick, just to clear it, just so that it's out there and you're aware? If you put, keep in mind that the council changes and as we go through the process. So if you put money to the general fund, you're not necessarily putting that to a restricted or reserved fund. So therefore, your thought process, because it's not restricted or reserved at that point, it's money put aside, but those funds could be pooled at the discretion of any council and used for any project in the future. Whereas if you dedicate the funds to a fire assessment fee, those are restricted, reserved funds. So there is a difference in saying that you could put the avalorum funds to the side. You would have to make sure that we follow all the requirements and go through that process.
You cannot fence those off in the general fund. You're not protecting them.
Well, to your second question, on the reserving, so every year, you know, basically every government starts with a zero-based budget every year. Okay? Every, however you want to call it, it's a zero-based budget. So the first thing you have to look at is your salary and benefits, make sure that's budgeted. Then you have to look at your debt service. So again, you know, you have to set your general fund expenditure budget on what your revenues are. So when you take those three major items, you know, salary, benefits, and debt service, then you can only plug the remaining revenues as an expenditure. That's where you, do you buy a police car or whatnot. As a reminder, one of the things that I made the statement on back September 21st is, you know, regarding home rule, the non-avalorum assessment collection is one of the last remaining things the state has allowed local governments to utilize, whether it's for collection for sanitation, collection, collecting for fire assessment, or streetlight assessments, whatever. But what we have no control over is come November of 2018, the next election, the third homestead exemption is going on the ballot. So the next thing that I have to do with Mr. Larson for the 14th is take into account that over the next 10 to 20 years, what is the estimated reduction in avalorum proceeds due to that third homestead exemption, which in my opinion, because, you know, I can't tell you the fact right now, is this going to be somewhere between $400,000 and $700,000 annually within the next two to three years. That's the, that, that amount of money is, for this fiscal year alone, we have budgeted a hair over $420,000 in revenue from the fire assessment fees. So if we were to, for some reason, not do the fire assessment fees and the third homestead exemption, it's not a $416,000 reduction. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of $800,000 to 1.1 million. So those are all the scenarios that I will be putting together and bringing back to everyone here in the next month. Okay? And Chief Greiner here adds a third one.
To rephrase that in a non-financial way, Mark Twain said in theory, there's no difference between theory and practice, but in practice, there is. In theory, we couldn't pay for new fire trucks out of the general fund, but in practice, we were driving around in an 18-year-old fire truck and spending $17,000 a year just to keep it open. It's very difficult without dedicated funds to be able to do these things. Mr. Tillot, you had asked about the Fitch results. The three stations locations that I had on the map there, that is from Fitch. It will be in the report that you'll see in full later, but that is based on their computer algorithm. Right. It's, it's just an algorithm. It says if you put stations here and here, what would be your travel time? If you put stations here, here, and here, what would be your travel time? And if you move them to these different locations, what would be your travel time? It's just this passionate map that shows if you put stations here, here, and here, this would be the result. The other thing you mentioned, you know, if we build it, they will come kind of thing, the need for those three stations is based off of the call load that we've had over the last four years. It's not based off of anticipated call demand. It's based off of the call demand that we have already had over the last seven years.
I, I think this is great discussion, and we, and we need to do something. I'm wondering whether at a future meeting, Mr. Larson could give us the pros and cons in his opinion of avalorum versus fire assessment fee, because I think there, you know, I think we need, I think we need that information. So if you could add that to his to-do list, I for one value that a lot.
Yes, I've had a couple-
Yes, I've had a couple of conversations with the chief and they're all great, but I do have a question.
Yes.
On top of all the other questions I hit you with, I'm not a fireman, what's an ISO-3? Is that good? Is that bad? Is out of 10, out of...
My apologies for not explaining. So insurance service organization is an insurance...
Yep.
...company that rates fire departments. And all insurance companies use that rating to help base what they should charge you for commercial property, or commercial property insurance. It's a scale of 10 to 1, with one being best and 10 being worst. We are a 3 right now. That's kind of where we are.
Okay, thank you.
First, I want to address council. I think this is one of several very important discussions we are going to get into in the next year to two years. Because of the timing of what is or isn't happening out in innovation, this is going to be where we are going to be forced as a council to think much further down the road than what I think we're used to doing. What these gentlemen have presented to us tonight is looking out 12, 15, 20 years and planning for it now. It's a huge undertaking, but I think if you look at what's happened in the past, part of the challenge is that everything's been done by pieces. And in relate to your comment about the 18-year-old fire truck, that's exactly what happens. You're competing against all the others. And I would dare to say, the reason we have a module building that we all sit here and say, "Oh, that's horrible," back in 2007, five, when that decision was made, the economy was not bad then. But we must have, as a council, whoever was sitting up here was dealing with a lot of things wanting to come out of the funds. So the way it went was a module building, probably on a piece of property we owned.
That's exactly right.
So we didn't have, and that's why it's where it's located. So we're sitting here saying, "Well, why did we do that?" Well, we own the property and at the time, they thought it had what it needed to have. And here we now sit and we've had the issues we've had, that long road, the turns. I helped them in making those turns. But anyway, so I think, back to my original statement, we have to look very broad at this. And this is one of several I think we're going to see. And I think the approach we're taking with our consultants, with these gentlemen, both finance and the fire, is a comprehensive approach so that we'll have the whole picture and all the pieces. And then I think, Ms. Tillot, we can then figure out which pieces we put in that picture and which we say, "No, that doesn't fit that picture for what we believe we want to move forward." But I really feel this is a long-term decision that's going to have a big price tag and it's going to be what we as a counselor are going to have to address if we don't want our grandkids and great-grandkids to have to deal with issues that we're listening to tonight.
I agree.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to, first of all, Mr. Councilmember Crail brings up a good question. Let's talk about bonding versus general fund funding of that. I know where I stand on that, but armed with information, it's a great idea. And as a follow-up to Ms. Hoaks's comments, I'd like to recall to the council a little factual history of when, during the council time when Mike Quinn was manager. During those council periods, they did exactly that. They stuck money in the general fund to build a fire, to buy a fire truck. They were going to stick it aside and save money, I don't know how much, $150,000 each year, whatever. They saved a lot of money and then all of a sudden, 2008 came and the downturn happened. And guess what happened? No fire truck, and that's why we had the 18, had the 18-year-old fire truck, is because they stole legally money from the general fund dedicated to pay, to buy a new fire truck. And that's why we had to go the way we did. And that's the risk we take, in my view, of not bonding is because bonding dedicates it to that funding and nothing else. While we can steal, beg, borrow, and steal from a current council budget and cheat our grandchildren, so to speak, because things happen that we can't plan for. And that's the value to me of going, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but that's one of the historical things that's proved, proved to me at least, that doing the general fund process is the poorer way to go. Not that it isn't worth finding out from Fitch exactly what the alternatives are. So I wanted to bring that history up.
Yeah, I'm confused. Didn't you just say that bonding cements it to that project?
Yes.
But bonding doesn't necessarily mean fire assessment fee, does it?
Yes, it does. No, I see what you mean.
And you pledge, you pledge your revenue. So once we pledge the revenue through the bond, then that's the money. So that, if you pledge a general fund, a certain dollar amount that you're going to put aside, then you can do that. But to just put money aside, you run the risk of what you stated earlier, that the previous city manager may have gone through. Whereas if we pledge through a fire assessment fee, that's our pledge. That's what the bond is based on. That's what the agencies look at.
The bond always would sue us if we took that money.
But, but what you're saying, but wait a minute. Bonding, bonding makes you pledge the money, but it doesn't necessarily dictate how you collect that money, correct?
No, we put that in there. That is put as part of your bond.
Right, so the fire assessment can be, can be the form of payment.
That's correct.
Or the bond that you know is going to come in every year. And you're not going to then look for...
You pledge that out of the, you could pledge it from ad valorem instead of an additional fire assessment.
Well, see, these are all things we've got to, but then bring it all back.
We can, so there's three ways you could do it, okay? Fire assessment fee. And let me go back to your statement on 2005. I actually did in 2005. 2009 came around and you had governments that were, you know, bringing in 50% ad valorem that they were just three years ago. So general funds throughout the state of Florida lost half of their revenue source.
Especially if they were not restricted or reserved, okay? So let's make sure we establish that so that you know that going forward.
So if you issued debt based off of the general fund, only the general fund, then as a reminder, for the save your home, a home can only increase 3% annually, but there's no restriction on how much the ad valorem, you know, the taxable value can go down by. So that's number one. Number two, you have a general obligation bond, okay? And what that bond would be is that, okay, you're going to set a millage rate that the voters approve, and that millage rate could be 1% or 5%, depending on what is needed for the coverage of the debt for that year. Okay? So that's the second way. So then, you know, so this year, if taxable value goes down and this year you did 1%, but taxable value went down the next year, you can charge, you know, a millage rate of 2, okay? So that's the second way. The third way is obviously on the fire assessment fee, okay? So if you know that you need $500,000 a year and you're going to have a little bit of growth, that's set. The only two that can go up and down is general fund or general obligation.
And as we stated earlier, when we, when we balance a budget, the first thing you pay for is going to be, one of the first items is going to be your debt. And then we go from there with personnel, to be honest with you. That's the reason you had the reduction enforced in past years, RIFs as we refer to them, because cities had to make your debt obligation first. So your debt, if you've committed the general fund, is the first thing you're going to pay. Again, if it's a fire assessment fee, it's a very different pot of money that you're dealing with. So that's going to be your difference at the end of the day.
As a former school superintendent, it was always easier to talk to the public in terms of what you were going to get with a bond. You're going to get three new elementary schools and 10 new school buses and whatever. With the general fund, you were always afraid the superintendent was going to get an extra million-dollar raise. Not that chief would ever accept that, but the idea is that it is very clear to the people who are paying for it precisely what the money's going to go for. And I don't know about the other members, but when, when we added staff this year, people, so adding a bunch of staff, yeah, police officers, firefighters. Okay, I understand. Yeah, so I, I, I think that public safety is our number-one concern. We've got to keep our citizens safe. And so that is, I guess, a psychological advantage. But, but again, I think all these things need to be considered and I think our, I think Mr. Larson or somebody can kind of come up with a pros and cons list of each of these things.
We had a great discussion here tonight. We had a great discussion on all these items and for this fire assessment fee or bonding or the general fund, whatever we're going to do, and you have your work cut out. And this council has this work cut out and to try to make a, I guess, a very good decision on how we're going to proceed in the future. I think we all know what this city needs and what we're looking to do. So you're going to bring back the information to us and we're going to have another meeting scheduled, set for December 14th.
That's right. December 14th, we'll bring the Fitch report to you, we'll bring Jeff Larson, our FA. I will also be bringing Richard Levy to that meeting because again, all this has affected also the Innovation District. So Mr. Levy will be here at that meeting also.
Write down some good questions for that meeting and we'll have another good discussion that evening. Thank you very much for coming and chief and the presentation, very, very nice.
I just want to say thanks, you all, for coming up to the fire station. That was a really big deal.
Oh, that was fun. That was our pleasure.
Thank you. Sorry I hit the...
You know, what was annoying me with that, you know, going to that fire station today was I heard we talked about mold. And here, a fire station was built in an area that sits kind of level, in an area that's surrounded by drain fields, water fields, okay? And you're placing the building, it has open doors, things like that, you've got to open up on a daily basis and whatever, and you're putting it right inside of a very humid area to start with. So go figure why you end up getting mold. And, yes, and it has a crawl space. And it has a very beautiful air conditioning system down. I've never seen one like that before in my life. It's unique. We'll say that it's very unique system.
Unique would be better than beautiful.
Okay, thank you all for that and...
Yes, sir. Thank you, fire department, for coming tonight also. Appreciate it. So next item on the list is the pickleball, pickleball court conversion, but also really our Parks and Rec discussion this evening from a CIP perspective. I think the first thing that we would like to address is that if you look on page 194, you see the capital improvement projects that were presented this past year. We are currently in the 2017-18 column, so you'll see that we have $40,000 for playground equipment, excuse me, disc golf at $31,300 and the pool shade had $23,000. The pool shade needs to happen, that's something we're proceeding with. Roy has his three quotes, so we expect to have that big go out hopefully this week or next week. We're trying to grab a hold of the discount at this point in time. The disc golf, there's a combination county and city partnership there, so again, that's going forward. So the item there in the top half of your capital program is the $40,000 equipment. The reason of putting that on hold is twofold, really. We have the master plan out there for the Parks and Rec. We had six semitals, three of which will be presented to you at the next meeting for consideration. So we were very impressed, the fact that we had six semitals, that's a, that's a good showing. But that type of equipment can be called out in the master plan and should be called out in the master plan. Although we know that Gilbert Park is several years old, to be nice, it's one of the easier items to put on hold in lieu of some of the other things. I started looking at the pickleball courts out at the Golf Association back in June or July, asked the Parks Corps to go out there and clean them up. And we actually started talking at that point about converting them. And then since then, we've had some other interest from other members of the community to look at those. Obviously, we still have some, some work downtown to look at those courts, but these are the ones we're bringing to you this evening. What we'd like for you to consider is putting the $40,000 on hold for the playground equipment, letting us continue with the three quotes presented to you tonight to interview and speak with these three companies, to speak to a couple of members of the audience or the public who are, I would call them professionals, or at least from that standpoint, could be considered professionals, to be involved in the process. I understand that our purchasing requirements, the manual requires to go with a low bid, and we definitely will consider that, but I'd like to ask these, maybe some of these other people who are involved in this on a day-to-day activity to at least be involved in that. Again, knowing that we must go with a low bid, what can we do to ensure that at least that low bid takes care of what we need to do? I would propose that of the 40, we use the 13.5 for the pickleball courts. Again, that adds six to eight courts up there. There's some difference on the numbers. Six to eight courts up on the Highland area, just to give us an alternative place when we have to close Donley, because we have to close it for several of our events in October, November, and December, and so forth. So it gives those folks who are active in downtown Donley an opportunity to go there. It also opens the courts when these are busy down here and allows that opportunity. Again, it also broadens our district base, which we say is Donley or Highland all the way down to the downtown. It forces the folks who are visiting or playing to include Highland as part of that process. The money would stay in the fund, it would just hold over, and at some point in time during this year, you decide to reallocate the funds. That's something you can do. If you choose to let the funds roll back to fund balance, that's something you can do and you can reuse them. It could be that we come back to you and we may need to modify and work on the courts downtown, so we would use some of those funds for that. So we'll have to reassess that first. But there also could be something in the master plan in which you can do real-time, quickly, it's a quick, positive, check-the-box type of item that we can go forth and do this year with those funds and then phase in the other proposals of the master plan. So there's some positive things there that I think that we can, can look at. The other thing that, again, we're hoping the master plan comes back to tell us, if you look at the splash pad that's in next year, again, it's a holding, a holding place at this point in time, to see whether or not there is a need, because that's one of the things we would expect the consultants come back and tell us that, hey, Mount Dora is lacking a splash pad when everyone else has one. I mean, that's something that I would expect for them to tell us. The Mogul stage, we've talked about that several times. Is that a purchase an advantage to us or is it not? Something that we can at least mention through the master plan that they look at and consider, especially when you look at all the events that we hold in the area, whether it's here up at Donley Park or Donovan Evans or Gilbert, will a stage provide us a benefit? So those are some of the things that we, we feel like we should look at, as well as the tennis light replacement to the LED. I believe we talked about that last year. Again, as they're going through this master plan review, they should look at our total program. They should also come back to tell us if we need a rec center or an alternative center. I would just mention to you tonight that we do not currently have a center for our summer program. So my goal was that, I hope anyway, that the master plan comes back and tells me that we need to at least identify a location to have our summer rec program. We currently move that from location to location each day of the week in which we have the program. And that's not a good thing to do as far as moving kids as well as having parents drop kids off in different locations. So I think going forward into this particular specialty or this particular discipline, we are waiting on a lot of the information from the master plan. So to talk about a lot of this data tonight is probably not premature, but I do believe we can put a hold on the 40, use that money if you so agree to reallocate at least some of the monies to create the pickleball courts. At least we can move forward there. We do know there's a need, there's a driving force. I think when I spoke to a couple of the members, we've grown from, you know, a few to hundreds. So our numbers are growing and I think probably every community has that need and it's a growing. But we're the center of talent and this is where they wish to be. So we need to address that too. So I would just, I think from a consensus point tonight, because the money's already in the budget, it's just a matter of reallocating it. If the council's content for us to go and, and look at least extending the courts out at the Golf Association, we would do so. Again, I would bring back to you the fact that we probably will need to look at the courts downtown and we'll bring that back to you.
Mayor?
I certainly support, from a consensus standpoint, support your recommendation. 68 pickleball is kind of the thing now and it's very popular, even in the country of Mount Dora, the place is packed. And so 68 additional pickleball courts, as I understand, without affecting any tennis, negative tennis court areas?
That's right. The courts there now are not in shape at all, so we would have no negative, it would be nothing... negative, it would be nothing but positive up there at the Golf Association.
That makes sense to me, I think that's good management decisions from my perspective, and I really look forward to that Parks and Rec study master plan. It's been long overdue, right, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir. We're on our way.
So, long overdue and that will give us the direction, remember the strategic plan?
That's correct.
For IT? Well, this is a strategic plan, hopefully for Parks and Rec, so it can be a good thing. Do you have my approval on that?
And you have mine as well. The most avid pickleball individuals live in my district and have been bending my ear on this topic for several months now, I guess, and one of them, does not live in the first district, I believe he lives in the lakes, but is on a national level as far as developing pickleball venues. So, using his expertise to help evaluate these proposals, to get ideas for the future or whatever, is, I mean, that's a real, it's an advantage that, or that's a good thing that we should take advantage of as a city. And I also think it's a great way to get some of the activity up into the uptown, I like to call it the uptown area, and back and forth to help with the flow there. I know that the Pickleball Association here is looking to hold tournaments, so if they have adequate courts where they can hold a tournament, that only helps with the economics of the whole city as a whole. People will come in, stay at our B and Bs, hotels, eat downtown, that kind of thing. So, I approve it wholeheartedly.
And I also, and I won't repeat everything you said because you did it very well, I will just say that I remember when Roy and I sat across the street in the bench there and looked at all the, where they dug out to put the drain fields in, and we said, wouldn't it be nice to put some pickleball courts on top of the event area we were, right? And we had to look up what pickleball was and what the rules were at that time. And now, here we are, it's developed into a wonderful activity for the community. Saturday morning, when I came down to clean up from Lake Hurst's event, they were all there going strong, I mean, early, so I think it's wonderful and I think the tie-in to Highland is fabulous.
I certainly agree as well. It's great we can use parking that's already at the Golf Association, it's wonderful. I am looking forward to the Parks master plan, because if you haven't heard me say this before, there are no parks in District Four. But I certainly approve, I'm sure you vote this idea.
I will not repeat what everybody else has already said, because I agree with them, but I do have two questions. One, the PIP says, I think, thirteen-five, and the proposal says eighteen-three.
Actually...
Did I misread something?
It says thirteen-five, if you do the conversion, convert the double tennis courts to eight pickleballs to thirteen-five. The other one at the bottom is if you do double tennis overlay is thirty-two. There's another one for eighteen-three, and then a third one for eighteen-five. So, we've got thirteen and then two in the eighteen, so we would go with a low bid of the thirteen-five.
Okay, very good. And the last thing, there was a very nice couch up there at the tennis court, did anybody get that or?
We put it in our office as new furniture, sir. I lost it and didn't get away. Thank you.
Mr. Massey?
I think this is exciting. We've had a fun evening tonight. We're looking twenty years down the road and I'm encouraged that we are, I'm delighted to be a part of this process. The pickleball thing is chump change, it's really something we can do today that really benefits our community, I'm totally supportive of that. I'm excited about the prospect of making plans for consolidating and improving our fire response time and the facility. I spent about twenty minutes in that building today, and if I had a lawn chair, I would have gone outside and slept outside rather than sleeping in that building. I certainly understand that problem. Something that occurs to me, and if this isn't appropriate now, tell me so, but we haven't heard from the police side of the house, the fire chief has proposed giving that building to them. Maybe if we're going to look at the long term, we ought to be thinking about how the chief sees that they could convert that facility to their use, and what modifications would have to be done to make it usable and acceptable to them as their home base if it were vacated by the fire personnel, and what the cost to modify would be. While we're dreaming twenty years down the road, it would seem to me that that would be a logical part of that whole plan.
Hopefully, that will be also, and with that, and just to, I guess, on the last one here, and I'll say yes, go ahead and go with this pickleball thing as you can do, and we'll take that from there, so I'll keep that question in mind for the next round on the Sunday.
We will, we'll have that for the fourteenth or the January timeframe accordingly.
Okay.
So, you have my month report there, that's the next item after discussion. So, we're going to kind of talk about several things, I think we'll know what's in the document first. So, you see the lobbyist's update, so item number two, I'll start with that one. There's an update from the lobbyist on the month of October, you also will notice you have his newsletter that he has sent to you, and I will actually send that out to you each week, and I will not wait till the council meeting, I'll just forward it to you as I normally do other items, so that you can read through that. We'll put that on the website as soon as I forward that to you and make it available, so that's an easy process for us. I will tell you that with the lobbyists, our contract was up with them in September, they are working basically at this point in time on that contract, that's what we're using, but I may bring to you in the second meeting in December or the first meeting in January, just an extension for the current year, knowing that we're going to go out to bid for the lobbyists. That is also a typical RFP that you do put out there, and we would see what other lobbyists would like to come and work for the city of Mount Dora, so it's something we'll look at, but I'd like to continue with John Wayne Smith this year, because they are representing us up in Tallahassee, and I think that's important, and to stop that at this point in time, we would lose some critical ground. They are fighting for some appropriations for us this year and that's important. So, that's the lobbyist's report. One of the other items that's presented to you, policy, yes, the next item is presented to you is the policies. We will send out to each member of council an email, one email, so please don't reply back, one email that just is the war documents represented here, so that if you wish to redline the war document, you can send that back to me, only me if you will please, or city clerk, and then we'll put that in the next document. If we don't receive it back in time for the agenda packet, it'll be in the next month, so no worries there. The policies presented tonight are, in some cases, you have some red lines, the flag one's a good example, there's some red lines. I also have included here the city council code of conduct, this was your last one that you accepted. At the December fourteenth meeting, I'm going to bring you the Florida statute one, about a page, two page. My suggestion, consider adopting that particular one, it keeps things very simplified and we don't have to worry about adopting a code that conflicts with the state or that type thing. Again, it's simplified, so I would suggest you look at that. So, these are, again, some of these are very simple processes and policies, but they make the effectiveness of the city government run just that much easier. And we'll bring probably to each of the next two meetings, a set of two to six policies. The goal is in January, at the second meeting after the work session, you'll have that meeting and then we'll adopt at least a series of some of these. Some of them you may not have a resolution on yet, that's fine, we'll push it off to the next meeting, so to me, this is just a continued process. Next item on there is the current projects update. Mr. Lear, Paul Lear, do you happen to have an update on Dogwood Mountain that you can come up and provide council? Paul Lear is sitting in for John Peters. John was out last Friday and hasn't returned yet. I believe we're expecting him to return probably Monday. I don't think he'll be in the office tomorrow, so Paul has the department right now.
Yeah, I'm Paul Lear, city engineer. We had a meeting, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend it, my staff attended with the general contractor and engineer of the Dogwood Mountain project, as everyone's aware of, it was damaged heavily in Hurricane Irma. Some of the things that were discussed, talking about the project being two phases, basically phase one will be all the stabilization work that has to occur to get that hillside back in place, and then phase two would be getting the utilities, the road, sidewalk, the curb, and the guardrail, and that kind of, and of course, the stormwater has to be addressed too. Right now, the contractor is saying he's looking at the week of January third to mold, and that's the general contractor. When he mows, then things are going to start moving quickly. Hoping that that third date holds, I know this project is going to take, it's always going to take longer than we all want it, but we're trying to stay on top of it. We're also trying to keep the homeowners up to date, I think we gave our information officer an update this afternoon to get to the residents and wherever at. Some of the bigger issues that I'm trying to, actually working on right now is we need to get access across three lots out there to actually build the temporary construction road, so that we can actually get into where we need to get into to do the work. So, hopefully, we'll get some cooperation there, we just have to see how it goes.
Empty lots or?
They're empty, but we have to track down the owners and get to talk to them and find out what they're willing to do, might have to be some horse trading, you know.
We may end up bringing you back a vacay or something from the owner to us to be able to allow us to do those things and we'll have legal involved in that process.
Right now, I've got land acquisition at Barfield, going to Clementary for me. Of course, we'll get Jennifer involved with this. The other thing that's still kind of, there's a couple of question marks, one is there are some additional funding sources that Pegasus, the consultant, has notified us about, and we're going to be looking into them. Sort of, I don't know a lot about it at this point, it's something we want to explore. Because some of the stuff that emergency management won't reimburse us for, we may be able to get reimbursed through different mechanisms. We try to exploit as best we can. The other thing that's still really hanging out there, and that's exactly how much work we're going to have to do with the wetlands conservation area, I haven't gotten a firm answer. In my experience, I had the blowout at Water Point One where we had a well go wild, take a hole, I decided down into that conservation area, we had to clean it out with a vacuum truck, and I swear, we did more damage than we did good, because you just can't, those plants are fragile, so. They might find out that it's just better to leave alone, but that won't be our call, that'll be St. John's call at some point, so it's kind of where we're at. Just have to keep that.
And we will, Lisa has scheduled for tomorrow an email she's putting out to the owners, again, to those thirty-some emails, thirty-some addresses in the area that will be notified of the update today based on Paul's information, as well as Mark Radoski, who attended the meeting. Some of those folks are the folks at Lake John as well as Lake Berthoud, they're involved in that process. So, our goal is to put the date on the website, keep everybody as informed as we can, and proceed with this, because obviously, the goal is to clean it up and put it, maybe not the way it was, but in whole again, at least, and that's the way FEMA looks at it, we have to actually take it back to the way it was and then we can correct it from there. So, that's the process in which FEMA pays, so we'll be going through that in the next several months, but we'll keep you involved in that process.
The only other thing is when it starts, people are going to complain, there's just no way around it. It's a major construction project, it's going to be messy, it's going to be noisy, we'll do what we can, but it's just...
We'll keep you involved.
But the alternative is if you don't do anything, you'll lose a lot more mountain.
Yes, that's true.
Yes, sir.
You certainly have to do whatever is necessary to make those homeowners whole to the extent that you can, that I know is the guiding principle as it should be, and if it's noisy to get that, to reach that end, it's going to have to be noisy to reach that end, as long as they know there's a good end.
Yeah, I just want, I think that's something to stress, because if you're closer to collecting the homeowners, it's just going to be that way.
Yeah, that's the reality of Hurricane Irma.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Paul. Now, we'll go to the monthly financial report presented to you a few moments ago. John McKinney presented you the monthly financials, I've asked that John take a quick moment, and finance people are never quick, I will tell you that from past experience, myself included, but we have, he has modeled this document similar to the budget. Again, consistency is important, so that you find very similar documents, and this is something we'll provide each month. If you'll look at the back of the document, you'll see your benchmarks, those have not gone away, we've kept those. We will provide on the website a cumulative on the benchmarks from Florida Benchmark each month, but what you'll see is your monthly numbers. So, John, if you'll run through this and give them an overview.
You've got to get your quicker than the attorneys though.
Oh.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Great. Council member, may I say, am I correct, thanking the mayor for those kind comments.
Thank you, John, please.
So, Mayor, Council, I just, as I stated earlier this evening, I just want to bring a different level of transparency to your city budget that you give me the pleasure of maintaining. So, this will give you a summary, so as, you know, our citizens, our right payers, you know, might be looking at this on the website, our potential bondholders, et cetera, I believe this gives a very good picture of our budget in whole, but it gives you details on how our general fund is made up, you know, where our revenues come from, how we spend, have expenditures in our different departments, police, fire, parks, cemetery, you know, all the various, you know, divisions within the city. It's broken up by the general fund, it's broken up by your other governmental funds, which is your CRA, your Northeast CRA, your impact fees, everything's very open and transparent. If you go back to the way the caper used to be presented, a lot of these items were rolled up, so you couldn't go in and see, well, tell me what the police impact fee is, because it was all rolled up. A whole different layer of transparency by fund. Then you go in and you look at your capital, what is, you know, projected for this year, your general construction fund, which are the projects that are funded by the general fund, then where are we on our general fund debt, so that's shown in here. Then you have your enterprise funds, again, that's your water, your wastewater, your cemetery, your stormwater, your sanitation, et cetera, all of those funds. Then again, your internal service fund, which are, is the business groups within the city's operations, but more importantly, part of the investment policy that you approved September twenty-first, I'm supposed to bring to you on a quarterly basis, your cash and investments. I'm going to bring it to you every month. So, there you go, in a snapshot, how much cash and what are our investments? So, here you go. So, it's all right there for you, our citizens, to take a look at at any time. But then, as the city manager stated, here's all the benchmarks. So, in the past, finance would put together four separate documents monthly, now we've consolidated everything into one document that I will send out to y'all sometime between the fifteenth and the twentieth of every month, as we're trying to go green, it'll be a link to it via an email to you that, you know, you'll be able to see on your computer and your laptop, et cetera, and at the same time you're getting it, I'll make sure that the department heads are getting it as well at one time. So, everyone's getting this information on a consistent timeframe and in a consistent format every month.
And the benchmarks, I will tell you, for, these are for October, they're still tweaking them, so you, in some cases, you may see some gaps, we'll go back and correct those gaps. I'll bring one attention... I'll bring one attention, because I think it's a good one to bring, it's the city clerk. A lot of the items that you see on there have dashes. A lot of those items are November, not necessarily October. So, there'll be a definition in the spreadsheet that says NA, this is only, this only happens in November. You'll have the same similar issues with all departments. Sometimes, there's a secular type of process that happens for a department, so it only happens one month or two months, and you don't see it the rest of the year. So, we'll put those notes in there.
This is all the month of October?
Yes, this is all, just the month of October.
So, we got eighty-seven 911 calls every day for the month of October, on average, on home. Because the total number is twenty-seven seventeen, it's twenty-seven seventeen nine-one-one calls, if I divide it by thirty-one, it makes eighty-seven calls a day. I was trying to...
What page are you on, please, ma'am?
Page six of seven.
Okay. And their...
Eighty-three police citations issued, six hundred and seventy-four traffic stops.
So, nine-one-one calls, twenty, twenty-seven seventeen, that is, for police nine-one-one calls, two thousand seven hundred seventeen calls. So, we'll verify that with...
For the month of October.
For the month of October. Yes. That would be from outdoor, so we'll...
Well, if you divide it by thirty-one, that's eighty-seven calls a day, and we really don't ask a lot, but that's wonderful.
We'll, we'll check into it, I think Chief's already left, so we'll double check that. Do you know your numbers?
Uh, we're gonna be at four thousand calls this year for the fire department.
But that's a year, this is one month.
But that's, yeah.
The police department, I don't, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, we'll find out.
So, it's two seventy-six EMS calls for the fire department. Well, that's an awful lot of nine-one-one calls.
We'll check it out, we'll check it out and let you know. I'll send the email back out to you after Chief, Chief Agrady.
That's probably a whole lot superior.
Yeah. It could be non-emergency and emergency, yes.
It could've been the Hurst thing.
Okay, well, obviously, it's a work in progress.
Yes. I will mention a couple of things, just as you look at the document, and, and please reach out to Mr. McKinney if you have any questions of the document. I usually like to point out one item, and that's the expenditure page on page three. I pointed it out only because you're in October. If you look at the city council budget, that's just the first one on the list, it says that your adjusted annual budget is ninety-six thousand, your year-to-date was six thousand, you've expended six percent. As you go through that, if you look at October, some departments encumber all their contracts the first month of the year, or they buy their operating supplies and so forth the first month of the year. So, sometimes, when you look at those percentages, you might need some more details, reach out, we can give you the details. Sometimes, the number is not self-explanatory as what you would expect. So, you know, you can look at, purchasing was twenty-seven percent. Obviously, we were busy, we're supplying, yes, putting back up, again, we had a hurricane, so we're also supplying, putting back into inventory the supplies that are needed. So, as you go through some of these things, it can be explained, we can provide you the details and the information. Just reach out to John and his staff, and they'll, they'll be glad to answer those questions for you. Um, other than that, I think it's a great tool, and if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those, if you have any additional questions. Thank you, John. And just a couple of quick updates, Mayor, and I will be finished. Merchant meeting on the sixteenth of November, I believe, was very productive. We mainly spoke with the merchants in reference to parking. We talked about the plans of the council, we talked about the audit, or, excuse me, the valet, we talked about the timed parking, the opportunities if we did not have merchants parking in front, et cetera, et cetera. So, we went through all of that. We also spoke to them about the policing services and activities. We had three members from the police department there stressing the fact that they're there, available, called the nine, nine-one-one non-emergency number, they'll come down and assist people, welcome to their car. So, from that perspective, I think it was very productive. About thirty merchants, give or take, actually attended the meeting. We discussed social media, Lisa was very informative to them. We talked about the possibility that they can create their own user group, so to speak, to notify each other of an issue, so that they're helping each other. But they, the police department also offered to be on that list, so they can be notified if there's a solicitation going on, or a peddling of some type. So, we really talked about all of that from a broad base. We talked a little bit about code signage, but they understand that that's something the council will address in the new year, so we discussed that. We also talked about events and signage for the events, and we've, we've had those discussions here this last year, where we put the no parking sign out, we've got an event coming up this Saturday, this coming weekend, and we put the, the signage out because we need to, because of the number of signs, three hundred-plus signs that we put out during a large event, and it takes time from our, from a staffing perspective. So, we talked about that and how we can improve that. Chris Carson reached out to John Peters today, even though he was not here. They've come up with a new sign to put in the downtown, because of short notice, keep in mind, we had this meeting last week, and trying to take those old signs and put a bag on them, and i- it's just difficult. So, we're gonna put a new sign up that just says, you know, this parking space will be, you know, is, is open today, but starting at three o'clock today, it's reserved for this event, and you could be towed. So, we're being very transparent, very upfront, because what we run into from the parks and the recreation and the policing, is the fact that these people pull into that space, and they stay, they don't leave, and they, you know, we may need it for a reason, obviously, we've marked it. So, we're, we're gonna try that this year. We, we got some good information from the merchants in how to handle that. Again, I could say several times, but it was a very productive meeting. We plan on having another one in January or February at another location, and have an open discussion with them again, and hopefully, we have a few more merchants show up. So, very content, very happy with that. John Agrady provided the UCR number stats, if you wanna call it such, and it's what they are stats, for the city of Mount Dora. We've placed that on the website, I will send it to you. If you cannot find it, get to it on the website, I'll just send it out to you, explaining to you how we were a negative number, as he discussed at the last meeting. So, I have that, I'll provide that to you tomorrow, and, and so that you can look at that. He will also, in reference to the question, to the comment earlier this evening, we have begun the traffic monitoring of the downtown. We have, I have to kinda tell our city clerk's funny story today, so if you permit me just a quick minute, when the police services are downtown, she can attest to that. So, we are down there.
I have a heavy butt.
So, we are spending time, but we are actually one...
She was just testing the...
She was just testing.
Just testing.
So, she, she met some very professional folks, so we, we are, we are spending time down there, as she mentioned earlier, when she came up, it may not be all day, because obviously, there's other areas to patrol and so forth. But we're actually going through the process we went through last year on third of a traffic study, so we will extend that now going forward. That does take some time, we'll probably spend ninety days on the traffic study to see what comes out of that. But we'll broaden the traffic study to not only include Clayton down the first and the speed zone, but also the, the pattern where we have kids at a bus, because it's all within so many blocks. Yes, it's right there together.
Clearly, it's only one block away from First, so it's that whole...
It's the whole corridor, yes. So, the traffic, this traffic study will be included in that. Lisa will post that as the FAQ for tonight's discussion. I will mention that TJ Fish sent to the council, and I will, I think I sent this out to you earlier last week, if I didn't, I'll send it out to you now, in reference to our request for 441 and 44B, and the fact that there was some discussion on it, we had some support on our side from our member boards, and anyway, it passed on to the next level to be considered of switching the forty-four, 441 to, from the forty-four. So, we're positive in that direction. Um, the accomplishments I've included in your package, we will continue on with those, those you will find in the budget book annually, as well as the CAPR. I think the last thing I'll mention is that, yes, Dr. Levy will be attending the next meeting. Staff has a meeting, has a meeting with him tomorrow at ten o'clock, so we'll be meeting with him. And I have a meeting with Dr. Levy and Dr. Seedorf next week, again, Innovation Way. So, we're very excited about the future of that, we're seeing some movement out there. I'd like to say that, it extends a thanks to the council. This past year, we have, we've actually accomplished a lot.
We've accomplished a lot between the, um, the Armistice Report and the certain, or the dedication of the trees in the downtown, of the parking options, of shuttling alternatives, annexations. I will tell you that we are very close to several hundred acres of annexations, so we're very, it's very positive. Within some of those acreage, we've also asked that their, that the owners contribute or donate some of the property for a future fire station, so that, that location may be predetermined by that donation. We've had a lot of code enforcement discussions, we're gonna have some future signage and other code enforcement discussions. I think we had a very positive budget year, we went through a lot of details that we haven't gone through in the past. So, again, I just really kinda wanted to kinda state that we really appreciate all your support and assistance, and we'll bring that back to you as part of the Mount Dora 2018 update, in which we'll give you an opportunity to see what will be presented during that form in the next month, so this is something that's up for me. And I believe, that is... Okay, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
We got a little more to run, right? And city attorneys report?
I guess I'm not verbose enough. I did reach out to, yeah, there's no point in that. I did reach out to the county attorney's office about the, um, the IFDA and the issues with respect to the minutes, and whether it, where needs to be a formal withdrawal done, and so she and I are going back and forth on that a little bit. We don't have a robust issue on that yet, but we are looking after that. Anything else, is, you know, all this other stuff I've been working on with them.
Okay, Ms. Hope.
Okay. Welcome, Carmen, and thank you all for the support as Vice Mayor, and thank you for all you've given me. I guess we should've traded seats. No, we're fine, we're fine. Okay, Lake Care's Food Pantry had their gala last week, and it was wonderful, and the city was great. Chris always helps us with that, so we were very delighted. I have to share my little story about adopting the spot. You know, y'all know I have the cemetery, so I had the key club out there this weekend on Saturday, and of course, you know, with young adults, you're never sure how many are gonna show. Well, twelve showed up, so I was quite impressed, and they planted poinsettias, and the big decision was where to put them all. But we finally got through it, and now we've got poinsettias at the entrance. However, one of the things I thought about as we were talking, maybe we need to adopt a fire station bedroom and fix it. And adopt the spot, and we can get new drapes and all that stuff we talked about today. Anyway, but thank you to the fire department for the wonderful ride in the truck, both the new and the old, and the tour, and just the tradition. It's wonderful to go through in a community like ours and know about these traditions that we have, and that they continue, because so many of the traditions are lost over time. So, I thought that was really wonderful. I'll give an early thank you to the electric department, public works, parks and recs, because I know we're getting ready to turn on our lights, and they've been working so hard, and having to work around still some debris and things, because it's, it's still there, and we're still trying to get our towns cleaned up, but they're working very hard on that, I know. And Roseanne, and she brought up about Patriot Cruz, because it's one of the things I like to do too, like a lot, a lot of you do. It was wonderful down there for that event, and to see especially the veterans from World War II. All of them are very important, but those gentlemen at the age of a hundred, ninety-two and ninety, and, and what our honor guard from the police department did, and then the wonderful water over, over the entrance there as they came in. If you haven't been there, you really absolutely have to go. And next year, it's on November eleventh, so that's great. We spoke about the merchants meeting, I went in to see, to purchase something in Ashley's Corner and got the big wonderful meeting from Ms. Nemec, so she's quite happy, and I was quite thrilled that Ms. Nemec happened. And the, one reminder, as I said to Chris, he, this list of us, what we have going on for the holidays is amazing, but I told him I'm always his one that knew what was not on here. So, I will remind you all, 'cause I did it last meeting, a Christmas Carol is being done at the Mount Dora High School, they created a theater and drama club, this is their first year, it's November thirtieth, December first and second. It's all of five dollars, and it's in the evening, so it's Thursday, Friday and Saturday, so we can support our high school, because the arts are some of the things that the schools just don't get funded for, so there's been an internal support of it. The Kiwanis Club gave money for microphones, and other clubs are giving things to support them, and so this is their first production of a Christmas Carol. So, that's it, thank you. Well, I've probably... Okay, I have it in my calendar over here. Okay, thanks, Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I wasn't here for ten days, took a trip to Tennessee, to, I'm sure we and I want to make sure our oldest grandson got properly buried, and we had a good trip. I was able to see, speaking of the arts, Broadway production of Les Misérables, and it was fantastic. It'll probably come to Orlando, or has been here, don't miss it when it does. I wanna congratulate again, as we all have, our new council members, especially Ryan, thank you so much for stepping up. I wanna also thank Jim Murray. It isn't an easy task, as Councilman Massey certainly knows, to put your name and your reputation on the line and, and be confronted by voters. It's an honorable thing to do, and I highly respect those that do, including our council member and Jim Murray. I've heard many people say, well, we could've flipped a coin, because their backgrounds are excellent, so thank you, Jim, for, for doing that. Thanks, Kathy, congratulations on your appointment in election as the Vice Mayor. I wish Roseanne and Carol were here, I, because I was gone, I wasn't able to attend that. It was a superb event, and I saw the pictures and the results on the web, and it was a wonderful project and well-deserving. Thanks to Ms. Hope, the goodies, by the way, they're delicious, appreciate that. I really am impressed with the meeting that Ms. Hayes' report to me, of the meeting with the merchants to gratify, if you said. I think that should be a regular, monthly, bi-monthly, quarterly meeting. It's, it's an excellent connection to let them know how valuable they are, and to answer their questions, and make them feel kinda like a part of the Mount Dora family, so I'm glad to do that, with all of them. I really wanna thank our manager again for these monthly reports she gives us. I have a, again, a selfish reason for doing that, because I let everybody know in terms of the Mount Dora, what those reports are, so they can say yes or no, critical or not for that, but, and it's an easy way for me to escape having to explain everything as the city board president. It's really a comprehensive report, and I think the city is well-served by those monthly reports to us from, from you, Ms. Hayes, so congratulations on that she put out. I know I've said it before, and it's really helpful, historically, to keep track of what's been going on. Best memory stays with time, and this is a good way to ensure that it doesn't happen this afternoon. I invite you all to pay attention to the lobbying report, which you get month, weekly from our manager. That's very, very important. As you all know, I serve on four policy committees in the Florida League cities. I'll be meeting with them, I'll miss some meetings that are scheduled here, but on December eighth and ninth, there are major pre-legislative policy meetings by the Florida League, and they help dictate and lobby for us, along with our own lobbyists, who, by the way, as I've said before, John Wayne Smith is highly respected by the legislature. And for us to do all that and gather those, hopefully even millions that we would not otherwise have, those monies that come from his services to us, is so important. So, look at the... to us is so important. So look at the lobbying reports. The home rule, as I've said a hundred times, will be under attack. Guarantee it. So we're guaranteeing it's under attack. We do have one constitutional provision coming up, as you know. I think, uh, Mr., uh, John mentioned to us, uh, the upcoming vote that'll happen. The odds are that that will be passed, which means we'll have less funds. Um, and the constitutional amendment to deal with home rule is so important. There's one coming up, uh, probably number sixty-one, whatever it is you see them in, or sixty-two, I guess it is. Uh, read those and, and keep yourself informed. If you have any questions, talk to the manager. Don't call me, council members. But, uh, talk to the manager and she'll talk to me without mentioning names, so we don't violate sunshine laws. But, um, those are really crucial to keep up with. Um, great financial benchmarks. Compliments to our manager and John for the, for doing that. It's the first time I've seen that much detail and credibility put into that, so thank you. That's it. Thank you very much. And congratulations to our council members. Uh, Mr. Tucker.
I will be very brief in that I also just returned after being out of town for nine days and crossed six time zones yesterday and got up sometime Sunday and got to bed last night at ten o'clock. Uh, very quickly, thank, welcome. Thank you all, the fire department. Love you much. Uh, that was a great time today. Really enjoyed it, cause I missed the first one. I wanna thank the city, getting the lights on overlook, that a number of the overhead lights, the street lights were out and for like two blocks, it was very, very dark. Thank you so much. Uh, hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. Thanks, everybody in the audience. Please have a great Thanksgiving. And, uh, Ms. Johns, if you need any help with the driver's school, Paula has been numerous times. She knew people in their first names.
Why am I not surprised?
If she can help you, she knows you. Backwards and forwards, she knows what to go, I'll tell you.
You and my chair as well.
She can be of great service to you. Again, please, everybody have a great Thanksgiving and be safe in your traveling.
Mr. Massey.
My thoughts as well. Uh, thank you, uh, for welcoming me, uh, council members and Mr. Mayor. Uh, and I'll tell you that I've been welcomed. Everywhere I've been, my thanks to the city staff. This has been a pleasure the last week, the merciful things that the city does and does very well. I'm pleased to inform that. I truly echo John's comment about Thanksgiving. The mayor gets a letter to all of us that say, remember the family, the culture of the process. That's very important. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Grayall.
Oh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Thanks to the fire department for your, um, hosting us, um, today. Uh, welcome, Mr. Massey. And, um, thanks, Jim, for spirited, um, campaign. Um, and, uh, I, I, I feel good about, uh, the directions that we're heading. And I think this is gonna be a very productive upcoming year, so thanks very much.
And, uh, Ms. Tilt.
Um, Ms. Johns, I have two words of advice for, um, a young person who has a heavy foot, coming from an old person who has a heavy foot. Cruise control.
Well, I've learned that in hell. Yeah, I haven't quite learned that in the war yet.
Yes, it, it didn't actually work pretty well, even talking to you.
I told the officer, I'll just go a different way.
I was like, really? That's your answer?
Gwen, this is recording.
No, Gwen, it's still Facebook Live.
And the rest of the, the sounding we're done and I'm going to echo everybody, have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Um, this, this year, we are, we are not, I am not cooking. We have no family coming, so, um, we are going to a neighbor's house. This neighbor has never cooked a Thanksgiving dinner before. Um, because it's late, I will not share his tentative menu with you, but needless to say, um, I have instructed my friends to call the house on Friday. If we do not answer the phone, just call the medical examiner. So, um, not bother with EMS, just straight to the medical examiner. All right, so down to the, the business stuff. The community trust, um, again, I wanna thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, for appointing me for the next two years to the community trust as the council representative. Um, we awarded twenty-three thousand dollars this fall to eight different organizations, ranging from the ACT reading preparatory program that helps youngsters get ready for school and, you know, reading issues, so that they're really prepared to read when they get to school and have to, um, to the food pantry for a computer-based scheduling software system to help enhance their operational efficiency, um, to the Ice House Theater to assist them with providing theater experience to children and young adults. And then there were several others. Um, again, I hope you'll come and join us at the trust next Friday, uh, from six to nine during the Christmas walk. And, um, also for those of you who might wander into a store and find something neat, um, the Mount Dora Community Trust is also a Toys for Tots drop-off location. Uh, the Serenity Park Brick Program, the Denver, I have some order blanks, um, on, on Misty's table over there. Um, so if, it's a great way, you know, they're not horribly expensive. Um, it's a great way to sort of memorialize somebody or thank somebody or your family or put a haiku on there or something like that, whatever. And this is just one of my favorite projects because it was community, you know, started from the ground up in the city of Mount Dora. Um, and Roy and his team just worked together beautifully. And we now have this precious little pocket park. Um, the Friends of the Donnelly House, uh, having, um, a tea, uh, to raise money on the second and third of December. The Chamber should be sending out an email, if they haven't already, about it, or you can inquire, you can inquire there. All right, now to the, to the, to the arts stuff. They, short-term vacation rentals. So we have either eleven or twelve bed and breakfasts in Mount Dora proper, you know, in, in, and we have a well-defined ordinance that spells out all the do's and don'ts and regulations and what they, you know, all the circles that they have to jump through in order to keep operating. Um, especially they have to, I believe it's three times a year. I know it's on a regular basis. They have to have a fire and safety inspection. We also have almost two hundred short-term vacation rentals that are Airbnb, VRBO, um, just for, you know, the sake of brevity, we'll just call them short-term rentals. And, and they're short-term vacation rentals. There is a definition, I believe, that is mandated by the state that said a short-term vacation rental is at least three times a year for less than thirty days. And that's, that qualifies. Now, in twenty-eleven, the legislature rescinded all local control over short-term vacation rentals. And then in twenty-fourteen, they gave, they gave us back the ability to regulate, um, life safety building codes. We can't regulate the number of rentals or the duration of the rental, or we can't regulate by zoning, but we can do life safety and building codes. And I had, I had, um, had one of the B and B owners that, that lives in, in my district, and by the way, I have almost half of them in, in my district. I might even have more than half, but that would've been the first district of the bed and breakfast. Call to just express their concern over this proliferation of Airbnb, VRBO, um, with absolutely no regulation at all. Um, and then I had a cons, another constituent call just a few days later to ask what the city's position was on short-term vacation rentals because the house next door to her in a residential, residential group street, um, has been bought by a gentleman from out of, from Mount Dora. I think it's Fort Lauderdale. And he was fixing it up with the, you know, intent of using it as, uh, an Airbnb and asked if she would be willing to manage it for him. So she wanted to find out, you know, the city's position and, and, um, said, really? I don't have a position, but there, there is none. So I've done a little bit of research and some of the potential issues that have been in other cities, you know, other cities are dealing with this in Florida, especially the coastal cities. Now, not so many, not so many, uh, interior cities, but we are a destination. We are a destination. People come, not just for the festivals. They come for three, four days long weekend. And we've gotten lots of good press in Southern Living and lots of other media outlets. So, um, we're gonna only see more of this, I think. So there's noise in a residential area. There's issues, potential issues with inadequate parking. There's perceived safety and quality of the neighborhood by residents there, you know, kind of a hotel next door type of thing with strange people moving in and out every four, five days. And safety, um, when I did a, really a very brief search, uh, online, looking at Airbnb and, um, VRBO, I only found one out of, it was like a hundred and fifty that I looked at, that even said, Black Lives Matter in kitchen. But most of these places have kitchen, you know, you rent the whole house, you've got the kitchen, you know, you could have hot grease fires or whatever. If you don't have, so I could go on and on and on. But, um, I did find, um, that the cities of Surfside, Lauderdale, by the sea, I believe, Hollywood, Marathon have in-place regulations that, and they, they're not terribly homeless, you know, but they at least require you to register with the city and, and have some sort of initial inspection. Even Orlando is starting to deal with these issues. I read an article in Orlando Sentinel just a few days ago about how they're, you know, trying to, trying to deal with it. And they're even considering having, um, the owner of the property has to be present during, during the rental. I think that's probably a step or mile too far, but whatever. So, um, at the very least, I see the need to have these places registered and have some sort of a building or fire inspection. It, it's easy to find them. You just go online, you can find them. Now, you would, that, that might, you know, there might be all kinds of issues with, you know, um, enforcement. But, um, at this point, I'd like to ask the council's consensus to sort of, you know, ask our manager to work with the city attorney, um, on coming up with some recommendations about whether we want to even, um, you know, address it. And the final thing is that I think this is probably one of those urgent things that should be done before the legislature decides to take away any more of our home rule. Um, they have in the past grandfathered things that were already in place. So I'm hoping that, you know, if we can get this done this year, that that would apply.
Where you're saying that, um, I saw our city manager and our, uh, our attorney writing down some notes, and I was telling them they're gonna be getting together and come back with something for us within the next month or so.
Anybody have any suggestions?
I may look at some legislative issues. Uh, six months ago at least, I gave a same speech to this council. And, uh, with the same warnings that your home could be converted into a six-bedroom, ten-bedroom community. And with the legislators, legislature's current bent is to permit that and to disallow any attempt or ability to regulate at our zoning level for the city. It would be terrible and the danger is there. The coastal cities have already faced it. Driven down property prices, down the nothing, right on the coast. And, uh, it's, uh, it's the same thing that is being considered as we speak by the Florida League of Cities and the policy committees I'm on. And the Florida League of Cities is lobbying against state preemption on those issues as we speak and for the committees, uh, right there. So I totally support doing that. There are some standard, uh, boilerplate positions that a, that a city council can make by contacting the people of Casey Cook and some of those in the Florida League of Cities. And have a boilerplate resolution, which should at least pass a resolution.
Have some right here.
Like we did before the home rule.
Oh, no, this is not the boilerplate resolution. This is, uh, this is the.
I think we did, we did, we did not do that resolution.
We did that with home rule, but we did not do it. And that's the same thing. I mean, at the concept.
Talking more of an ordinance.
I'm talking it more, yeah, I'm talking of an ordinance to come back to that we can, that has some teeth.
Or just a resolution.
It's a very uphill battle. The, the legislature is very determined against us trying to go beyond, um, what they've established. Right. The best, you know, best method is the lobby, obviously, against it. We're pretty much, pretty unprepared in the whole area. There's very few things we can regulate through our police powers. Um, like you said, we might be able to come up with a little bit of something. We'll look into it. Um, we can regulate noise, parking and possibly registration and signage. Those are about it. Everything else, I did a little bit of research, um, on it. July, uh, this year, Miami-Dade tried to do a similar ordinance and, um, they got smacked around pretty badly and in the end decided not to do it. Some of the things they wanted to do was, um, impose, impose some of the home inspection rules, um, limiting the number of rentals and there was something else in there.
I know limiting the number of rentals is a known, uh, definitely.
You can't, you can't, you definitely can't limit the distance between them. You can't limit, limit the number of them in the neighborhood. You, you know, there's a lot, a lot of things you really can't. It was pretty much preempted by the state. Um, we can, I can look at the Surfside and the three that you mentioned, and I caught there was one more named Patch.
Uh, there was Marathon, Surfside, uh, Lauderdale and Hollywood.
Lauderdale?
I think it was Lauderdale by the Sea.
I'll take, I'll take a look at those ones.
I'd like to add one more thing, though. Uh, city attorney and, and our manager came back to resolution. The resolution speaks to the legislators. The resolution says, here's our position. And we have three, depending on, well, Lake County has five legislators. Then we'll be pushing the red or the green buttons come boat time. And the more pressure we can put on them to make sure that the right things are done. And the more telephone calls city residents can make, uh, understanding the issues, the better. So at least a resolution will say, in home rule, while I gave, made, as you know, I presented that to the full legislative delegation at the community college, Lake Sunday Community College. And they were appreciative of that. Most legislators want to know what our position is. They're looking for that excuse to push the button. So I really support doing whatever we can as possible. I think we all agree with that. Sorry for the addition.
One other quick thought that ties to that, is there a fee revenue source here? If we're gonna have to, an administrative fee for the registration, the inspection, that sort of thing?
Correct. I mean, and all the cities do. Now, the B and Bs that we have here, they pay big bucks every year for theirs. And to me, if, you know, renting a room in your house is pretty much the same as renting a room in a B and B. I mean, the B and B owner is required to live on the premises. You know, I mean, um, it, it's a potential revenue source for the city. Apparently there is a law that this, some sort of tax needs to be collected. Um, I, but the most, to me, the most important thing is, I'm not trying to get rid of them. I'm not trying to have any kind of onerous, you know, regulations. But I think, I think we need to at least know what we've got, owe it to the citizens that live in these neighborhoods to, to kind of know that, hey, the house next door to me, you know, at least has a fire extinguisher. And so when they throw, you know, cook french fries on the stove or whatever and my, and the roof catches on fire, that it's not gonna. that it's not going to spread to my house, you know. Right, or the neighbor can't get in, and, and I think it helps level the playing field. And I know the B and B owners have said to me, "Don't move." But, but let's try to level the playing field, you know. We gotta pay, they should pay, that's a money-making proposition for these people, and it is for us. And I just think that that's fair treatment, so.
That's about it, Paul, thanks.
Right.
Okay.
I'll help.
Thank you. Okay, again, I just want to, again, I wish everybody very happy Thanksgiving. And again, thank everybody for the love and support and having our time. Anyway, Light Up Mount Door is on Saturday night, and I'd like all the council people to see this movie again onstage, if you would, and if you beat it around four, they have completely light up at six-thirty. So if you get there, if you're there, I'll be there, just come around that side, place over there around the floor rafter and we'll probably gate, and you'll be there, floor rafter six, and we'll be there after, and also, we'll do that. Okay. Well, just, let us try to see what happens.
Two million plus.
Now, we got, I just saw Water Park has been publicizing under flyers that they have three. We're going to have to do, we're going to have to do a little count here for Chris, and then we'll count in like two minutes.
They have three, right?
Well, we've kind of additionalized this.
But by per capita, we have more lights than they do.
And they don't have a tree, so.
That's right.
And they're per capita, we have more lights.
And we have a tree.
I've not been to Winter Park during Christmas, they don't, they don't have a big tree anymore. They don't really, this year, I don't know if they do have a tree.
Assuming this channel is going to be sending out everybody, the current listings of who, you know, which appointments are coming up. And look at those and notify people that you do not going to, here points, make sure to notify everyone if you're not going to be going to them, and have some issues before the task, and that might happen. So notify people if you're not going to refund, and have some, your names ready, going to refund them, the, the new appointments, I need to be, the application to pull back, and you have to, I have to go into Ms. Johns and the panel to ask her so she can do that after, been serving on our committees already, that they already have the paperwork in, and we don't have to worry about that, right? So we'll shut them out, be ready for, I guess, the second meeting in December, we'll try to do many, a few appointments at that point, and we go from two-year periods, and I know there's been some things happening in the past. You guys can agree if you're not, that's fine, but a person, if we appoint somebody for a two-year period of time, let's say if they're expiring, you know, this December seventeenth, okay, in 2017. If there's a reappointment thrown in the middle of a term, somebody backs out or whatever happens, or a new person gets elected, if they're going to do it, it's just to fill, they should just fill that term, okay? If it's a two-year term, and then you're filling somebody new in an interim period, appoint them just for that, you know, for that, you know, for that term alone, and then, and at the end of that term, then you can reappoint them for the whole term of two years, that would be good. So if that's what people would say, we don't have a lot of those things, you know, with licenses and staggered closing dates and everything. December the third, Chris, real quick, you just nodded your head, is that still on for the screening?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A movie that was filmed, quite a bit of filming done in the city of Mount Door. It's a movie so hard to read, it's called Prodigal. It's about a prehistoric, a prehistoric crocodile that emerges into a, and comes into wreak havoc on the little town of Pleasant Creek. Pleasant Creek, yeah, Pleasant Creek, which is moving back. It's an independent, independent film, and Michael McLaren has done a lot of the work in putting the scene together, he's finally got it. And there's going to be a screening on December third, it's called a screening, and kind of classified as a premiere, but it's not technically a premiere. It's screened from the community center, tickets, and what it was going to be done, Michael, who's been filming the film together, it's going to be his first screening of the movie, it's a little over an hour long. He had cut out some scenes that he really wanted to cut out, he had to, but so it's a lot of time to go back to a little over an hour long. So it's a long movie, but we're, it's going to be at the community center, and we're going to be doing tickets at ten dollars apiece. All the ticket sales is going to, is going to be going to, the total amount of ticket sales is going to go, seventy percent of that is going to go to the community center for their lighting project that they're looking to do, and thirty percent is going to go over to the bounty house. Okay, so that's what the money's going to be for, it doesn't go to the filmmaker, anybody else that strictly. It's going to be coming in, and we'll write back out to the, for those two items only. So, I know this is short time, but get the tickets, and you can get online, I think it's Mount Door Live has the tickets on their website.
What time?
I think it's seven o'clock is the showing, and I think Michael's planning a very nice night for that evening, he's got a costume.
It's on the six. Six P M.
Six P M. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and it's going to be good, grab some tickets and get your friends, it's going to be a fun night and see something. You want to see different points in town where it was filmed, and you might see, and some, there's lots of local people that was recruited for the show, and I just have one of those.
Oh, now we find, you're kidding?
No, 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 no. No, he, I'm over there, I got my mirror on there, but I was standing off to the side and I was filming a scene that he was doing. So he included, he put, he did a pan shot real quick, and I just went pan out.
He was panned in.
I was panned in, right. So anyway, I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, this is, it's neat, he's planning, he's planning another horror film that he's going to be in here, and he says it's going, Laimbo Renounce, Melissa Bash, Sebastian. And he's putting that together right now for sometime next year, but anyway, he's moved from Fort Lauderdale to Mount Door. And he's a, just writing right down on the area here, so he's going to become part of our community, so, which is great for that. Next month, I think it's next month, the city manager says she's going to try the consent agenda here because most of everyone of the council people here and has regular meetings, and let them go over the items on the agenda. So you're familiar with the items, you're familiar with your, your, the way you want to vote, and their things. And so we're going to try to help shorten our meetings by having a lot of items, like tonight we had fireworks, things like that, and did kind of routine stuff, that could be just on a consent agenda, we can just take one of those, and I've got some things a little quicker at that point. So she's going to come up with some items for the next, the next meeting to try, and have on the consent agenda. Because the last time she tried one, every item got pulled, so, so didn't work out that good. But I think we're at a stage now where everybody's talking with the city manager on a weekly basis and is not more familiar with the, with the agenda, and that's going to be on the, so we can maybe get through the consent agenda very quickly. And Mr. Grayell, on December the sixth, if you're available, I need you to go to the represent me at the FPL meeting, I am going to be at the mayor's conference, and I'm going to land on that activity, so, if you would.
I'll try to do that, I don't have my work scheduled up.
Okay, I'll be there if I can. And that's basically my notes, so, again, just want to wish everybody very happy Thanksgiving, and enjoy your family, give everybody a hug. Okay, that's it, and we'll be right back.